Call to order for the Watertown City Council meeting for April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. We will be, we will rise and as the fire chaplain, Hank Rosso, leads us in prayer.
Our heavenly father, as we gather here this evening, we're so thankful for such a great group here that have concern and love for our community. Lord, thank you for these leaders here, so much they do, so much time, their talent, so much is given that people don't realize and we're thankful for them today. We're also thankful for our law enforcement, our firefighters, paramedics, our sheriff's department, who each one works and gives their best to make sure that we rest safely. God, we ask your blessing on this evening today and we prayed you'd give us wisdom and that you'd give us understanding and we consider others more important than ourselves. God, we thank you for this great community of Watertown. We don't take it for granted for this great place we live and we thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Would our finance officer, Christian Bobzine, please call the roll?
Thank you. Bueller?
Here.
Danforth?
Here.
Pauline?
Here.
Paulson?
Shadi?
Here.
Tupper?
Here.
Vilhauer?
Here.
Thank you.
Quorum established. The chair will entertain, okay, I would, the chair would, without objection, like to move item N from the regular agenda, which is the moving allowance. I would like to move that in the interest of time to the consent agenda. If there are no objections to that, item N, which is an extension on city manager Amanda Mack's moving allowance, without objections, I will move that to the consent agenda. With that, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda made by councilman Paulson. Councilman Vilhauer, do you have a question?
Yes, I, I'm not opposed to, but I, I'm concerned about the high dollar amounts being at the consent agenda. I'd suggest moving E and J. Have a brief discussion as part of the regular agenda.
All right, I can move E and J to the end of tonight's agenda. Councilman Danforth?
Sorry about this, and I meant to discuss this with you earlier and we got tied up with, with other issues here and I can't find the number, the letter, right now. But the item that's on here for the, uh, uh, street department survey services, I got some questions on that before I'd like to prove that. And, and is there just a way we could just pull that and have that as a, just a regular action item, just to talk about for, I don't think it'll be much, but I'd rather ask the questions before I vote on it. I can't figure out what you want to do. It's, uh, H.
H.
Is it H?
Yeah.
We will, we will pull that and add it to the end as well.
I just, there's some questions I would like to have on it.
No, I, please do. I mean, the last thing any of us in the, in the city of Watertown needs is for a council to approve anything that they're not comfortable with or haven't properly vetted, so. All right, so with N on consent, but E, H, and J pulled and added to the end of the, the agenda, regular agenda, the motion is to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, councilman Bueller?
Yes, thanks, mayor. Did we say we're moving J to, to the regular agenda?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right, uh, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Made by councilman Paulson, seconded by councilman Bueller. Okay. All right, thank you very much. Uh, now we are open for public comments. If anyone is here to speak about something that is not on the agenda, I, agenda for tonight, you may do so now. Councilman Danforth?
Yeah, I just, I just would like to say in the open that, uh, here within the last couple of weeks, we, we lost an individual in our community, Karen Brandright. And Karen, I got to know Karen for, in working with her for many years on our plan commission and board of adjustments, and she was always a very loyal, well-prepared individual for that. And she did a great job and she was a really a great person to get to know and to call a friend. And, uh, so I just wanted to recognize her on that and her passing and, and give our thoughts and prayers to her family and give her that recognition, so.
Thank you very much. Any further public comments? Seeing none, chair will entertain a motion to approve the regular agenda with one alter, with, obviously we're adding E, H, or E, H, and J onto the end, and in the sake of respect for everyone's time, I am moving item F, which is the discussion on CAC's fourth addition, to the first item on tonight's agenda. But, excuse me. So, motion made by councilman Tupper, seconded by councilman Vilhauer.
Mayor, did that include moving N to the?
I, I did say we are adding E, H, and J to the end.
No, no, N to the regular agenda. That was, okay, so we've already addressed that.
Yep. So, yeah. Normally, we're better run than this. But no, actually, that's, it's a good lesson. Everything is being done and out in the open, and it has to be done according to records, so. With that, the approval of tonight's regular agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item F is a first reading of ordinance twenty-two dash twelve, amending the zoning map of the city of Watertown of CAC's fourth addition from PUD to PUD planned unit development. For more information, oh, actually, councilman Danforth, you would like to preface this discussion with a comment.
Yeah, there are certain times when we have instances where we feel there's a conflict of interest. Uh, and in, in doing that, if it, uh, if it impedes our ability, either by state law or our ability personally to, uh, to not make a, an unbiased, uh, decision or action, uh, then we should recuse ourselves. And in the first item that we're going to be talking about, um, I just want to disclose to the public that I have a son that lives out in CACs, has for several years, um, that his concerns, uh, he's expressed to me and he expressed to the plan commission, uh, solely deal with Thirty-third Street. And, uh, and, so I am not recusing myself for that reason. I have no financial interest in his, in his home. Uh, I, I believe that my history, longevity on the plan commission board of adjustments and understanding what we've done historically, for development purposes and how we've done those things are reasons why I feel my input and my vote is important to this item, so I will not be recusing myself.
Thank you, councilman Danforth. Councilman Paulson?
Thank you, mayor. Um, similarly, um, I am employed by a partner in this, but not on this land sale side. Um, so I do not have a direct financial interest in this development, and for that reason, I will not be recusing myself either.
And just want to state that by law, we have consulted our city attorney, Matt Roby, and he concurs with that decision, that as long as there is no direct monetary gain, that is perfectly legal. Correct, Matt? All right. Before we go to our public works director, I want to say a few things in, to preface this conversation tonight. Again, for the public or anyone who is new to this, there is no decision made tonight. We are not taking a vote on this. This is just a first reading, and normally that is only for council discussion and questions. We have already had an hour and a half of questions from the council at the work session. So tonight, we'll focus more on discussion, but we definitely want to foster questions. At a first reading, it is not required that the chair allow public comment, but I will, because I respect that everyone who showed up here tonight wants to be heard. With that said, I want to note, put in the record that I would say that there's, how many people would you say, Chief Roland? Let's say mid forty people in attendance in council chambers. How many of you are opposed to the CACs? Uh, let's say the, the rezoning of CACs? I want it, for the record, that basically all but maybe five are in opposition who are here. I also would like to say that, uh, the public hearing is actually going to be at the second reading, which is going to be the first meeting in May, or at, May second. And at that point, then that is a public hearing. Anyone who wants to speak has that right to do so. I want to also put some things in the public record that a lot of the council, I think all of the council, has been notified of several emails. If it has been sent to every council member, which I know several of them have, then by law, that is entered into, that is, that is an open meeting record. So, that has, that will be stipulated. The council recognizes that. Also, we have been placed into our hands a petition with at least one hundred and fifty-five residents who wanted to voice their opposition to this as well. So I'm reading that into public record, and some of those questions regarded traffic, traffic flow, can the road handle the traffic, safety on the roads, who wants or even needs the apartments, the covenant concerns, the commercial use of the proposed property, processing on permitting, timing of the change of the plans, and just, there were a lot of people who didn't even cite a reason, they just didn't like it, and that's valid. So I wanted to say that we have heard a lot of the concerns, and over the last hour and a half, you have heard some of ours. So, just wanted to say that, that, uh, if anyone wants to come up and speak, just ask that you be, uh, unique, as far as not repetitious, concise, and courteous. And that's just, just being, trying to run the best meeting that we can. So with that said, we will go to our public works director, Heath Von I.
Yes, thank you, mayor. So tonight is the first reading of a zoning map amendment for an area known as a portion of, um, fourth addition of the CAC subdivision. The owner of the land, Steve Horning, is the acting agent for the CAC's Lakeside Edition, has submitted a petition to rezone lots seventeen through twenty-two, block three of CAC's fourth addition from PUD planned unit development of CAC's fourth addition to another revised PUD planned unit development, Pelican Lake Apartments. Uh, Mike Lawrence is the applicant and developer of the rezone and PUD plan proposal for Pelican Lake Apartments. The plat of CAC's fourth addition was recently approved by the city council on March twenty-first of two thousand twenty-two, which included those R-one, single-family residential and planned unit development zoning districts. Uh, the PUD allowed for rural residential development. This PUD proposal, this before you tonight, uh, and at second reading, first meeting in May, includes six lots that are adjacent to Lake Pelican and to develop the lakefront with mixed uses, including commercial, residential, and recreational uses. The developer's vision is to provide affordable apartments with access to Lake Pelican, onsite recreational uses, and a local restaurant. The PUD plan states that, uh, excuse me, apartment buildings shall have a uniform look and finishes to the neighborhood of the single-family homes. Uh, islands shall be installed within the parking lot to provide areas for internal landscaping and tree plantings. The setbacks for the PUD will meet the minimum requirements of the R-three multifamily residential district. Uh, those setbacks being the front yard of thirty feet, side yards of twenty feet, rear yard of twenty-five feet, with a maximum overhaul allowable height of fifty-five feet, uh, for the structures. The density for this proposed development includes a total number of units at a hundred and ninety-two, total number of bedrooms at two hundred and eighty-eight, the restaurant occupancy at seventy-five, total parking spaces that would be required would be a little over three hundred at three thirteen, and the total parking spaces provided through the PUD plan show three hundred and thirty-four. The PUD will meet minimum parking requirements for multifamily dwelling units, being one per bedroom, and for the restaurant being, uh, one per hundred and fifty square foot of gross floor area. Uh, the property also includes point nine acres of jurisdictional wetland where the developer proposes to create a marina. The developer would be required to work with, uh, US Army Corps of Engineers and the city to obtain the proper permits and check-offs before constructing any such marina. The PUD proposes a, also proposes a public boat ramp or lake access to be dedicated to the city of Watertown. Uh, such dedication would require approval by the Parks, Rec, and Forestry Board, as well as the city council, uh, during the plating phase of this PUD. This PUD does not approve such dedication and, uh, further will continue to be discussed, uh, with the pertinent parties in the subsequent approvals that would be required. Uh, the development does not require park dedication, uh, however, because CAC's fourth addition has already met those requirements. Uh, something was talked about in the work session previously, where the CAC's fourth addition has committed, uh, land for a bike path extension as part of our master plan for the rec trail system throughout Watertown, in lieu of a park, uh, place, if you will, or a park improvement place within the development. Um, the comprehensive land use plan shows this area within the boundary of a CL Lake Commercial District for Lake Pelican, which allows for the proposed uses in the PUD. The CL Lake District was created to allow for commercial activity that is conducive to Lake Pelican, as well as Lake Compeska. Um, the future land use map shows the area as residential. That's another point we talked about in the work session, that our comprehensive land use plan does show this area as residential. However, we've recently adopted a new commercial lake zoning district, uh, that has identified this area, as well as the boundaries of both lakes, to be eligible for that commercial lake district. The development, uh, would be sustained by the internal street network of Eighteenth, Nineteenth, Thirty-third, uh, Forty-second to the west, and, uh, all the appropriate, um, design standards would be met throughout the construction of the public infrastructure to sustain this subdivision. The planning commission did recommend approval to the city council at their April seventh meeting, uh, on a split vote of four to three. There was extensive discussion during the public hearing. Um, there were many neighbors present at that meeting, approximately twenty-five to thirty, that expressed opposition with concerns that include increased traffic, uh, the proposed public boat ramp, lack of public park space for children, and water quality concerns for Lake Pelican. Uh, some of the facts behind this zoning application, the current zoning designation is PUD planned unit development for rural residential. What's being proposed is a different amended PUD planned unit development for mixed-use commercial and residential, uh, and multifamily residential. The adjacent zoning, zoning districts include R-one, single-family, uh, and, uh, PUD rural residential, and then you have Lake Pelican, of course, to the south. Portions of this property are within the hundred-year flood plain. Those regulations would be applied at the time of building permit issuance. And I have a map I'll pull up as we, uh, as I'll stand by for any questions that the council may have.
Thank you very much. Uh, this is not a public hearing, but at this point, I will ask, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this project? Would anyone like to speak in favor? Seeing none, would anyone like to speak in opposition? Uh, just come to the microphone, say your name, and that's pretty much it?
Hi, uh, my name is David Dahlke, and I do thank you for just allowing us to talk. I'll try and keep it really brief, um, considering all the conversation during the work session. In, in February, we sat down with, uh, Mr. Steve Horning, and there were a couple of critical documents, what we looked at when we were considering the purchase of a lot. Now, there were no single fam, single-family homes along what's known as North Pelican Lane at that time, so we were looking at buying the first one and, and so we asked some questions like, you know, why, why isn't that developed yet? And he says, well, sometimes it just takes someone who has the courage, you know, to light the spark and get that going, and so, uh, we reviewed the covenants and we reviewed the master plan for this development, and it did extend all the way from Thirty-third to Forty-second, so it was the full development that we were viewing at that time, even though the first addition was the only one that was developed at that moment. But, um, I, I just want to go on, um, talking about the relevance of the covenant. I know that there's discussion about the new addition not having that, and so the, the topic I want to bring up that I believe is, is kind of new is, is that I believe that the city council earnestly desires to do what is best for Watertown. And when I think of a development going in, they're extensive, there's a lot of land, and so they tackle it in chunks at a time. And so there is just a, a piece here and then a piece added on when those properties are sold and you need to make room for more. I think of Dakota Commons, River Ridge, and, uh, CACs is no difference. Um, on May second, this council is going to vote to either approve the rezoning of these lots, which opens the door for development of Pelican Lake Apartments, a marina, restaurant, and public access, or a vote no to reaffirm the PUD zoning in R-one to be used in corporate, single-family homes. But I think that either decision is going to set a new precedent for all of Watertown, South Dakota. Voting no means that CACs would remain single-family homes. It affirms the people of Watertown and future lot buyers, that their investments could be safe within the master plan of any growing development. It gives them confidence that developers are held accountable to their word, that a master plan holds some merit in deciding whether later phases can deviate from the initial purpose. But voting yes, however, means that these lots would be rezoned to allow structures that violate the initial purpose of our development. It would open the door for additional rezoning on potentially more lots in the future to other buyers who are looking to use this space on CACs for some other use other than what was intended. Voting yes would embolden and enable other developers from other developments, um, thinking about those others I mentioned, to deviate from their master plans if the price was right. Voting yes would tell the people of Watertown, the people who are considering moving to Watertown, and to anyone else who plans to build a new home, that their property purchased within a growing development may not be safe or protected from similar rezoning decisions to come. Voting yes sets a new precedent, one of insecurity and a lack of trust, that actually brings harm to Watertown, in my opinion. Was all of this a ruse, where we swindled under a false pretense of CAC's Lakeside Edition being for single-family homes? If you put yourself in our shoes for a moment, would any of you spend half a million on your forever home near this high-density residential complex that's being proposed? Neither would we. Well, what if you were told it would all be single-family, and then you built your home? Would you be okay with a developer to reneg on the promise halfway through the project and zone it differently than promised? The best thing for Watertown is honesty, integrity, and transparency. Isn't that the kind of legacy that you would want to leave as a council? This council has the opportunity to take a stand, one that encourages honesty, integrity, and transparency between developers and the people of Watertown. The request to rezone in the midst of a development, in my opinion, it lacks honesty, it lacks integrity, and it lacks transparency. Simply knowing that sixty or more homes have been sold, or, excuse me, sixty or more lots have been sold under the guise of single-family development, then find out the developer proposed this deviation, and then to watch the city possibly allow this to happen. I know this isn't right. The residents in this room know it's not right. And every single person that we visited in a neighborhood just canvassing for the petition that you guys saw, know that it's not right. As I shared with you when I forwarded that, is we never encountered a single person in all the surrounding neighborhoods who had any desire to see this go through. I believe if you take a step back and see for yourselves, you'll also see that this is not right. The majority of us would agree that it should not have even come to this point. So I'm sorry that this decision has landed on your desk. We never dreamed that one day we'd have to plead with the city council to take the stand. I realize that it's not your job to tell people who they can do business with or not. That is not what we're asking. If Mr. Lawrence and his investors want to develop six nice, single-family homes on s, these six lots instead, he's able to do that under the current zoning. He might even find great pleasure in doing so and make a decent profit. You can promote, as a council, what is best for all of Watertown by taking a stand for honesty and integrity and transparency. That's what we ask. That can be your legacy, protecting the interests and investments of home buyers with a detrimental reliance, the promise of single-family homes in our neighborhood. And I do thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to testify in opposition?
I need the map, uh, with the streets on it, the seventeenth.
Steve, could you state your name for the record?
Oh, my name is Steve Horning. I'm, uh, president of CAC's Lakeside Edition and also CAC's, uh, fourth edition. Okay, now, now, that's the original. Let's go to the one we just approved before, uh, the... You know, the, the CAC's fourth addition is the one I want to see. Yeah, with the roads there, okay? Now, about a year and a half ago, I come to the city, uh, Heath, uh, Brandy, and Amanda, and the fire department. the fire department, the police department, and I believe the park board was representative was there too. And could I come over to the map and show you what I'm trying to say?
If you want, but I think...
Now, you may have to give me some instructions here. Okay, so, so the fire department was the one that was really opposed. They said, "Horning, you need..." Oh, we lost, did I do that?
Just go with it. Just go with it, we can figure it out.
Okay, so right, right here, what I wanted to do is do this portion of the development first, okay? That'd be the first phase of fourth. The fire department said, "No, we've only got one road out. That's not acceptable. We have a fire danger, we need two roads." So they said, "The only way we can approve this..." Are you about to hear me? Am I...
Yes.
"...approve this is if you would do everything. We need two ways to come into this for fire protection. You gotta, we could come in this way, and we can come in this way." So I really didn't want to swallow that, but I agreed to it. So I agreed to swallow this here, okay? Now, can you go to the six, the six lots we just had up there? Okay, so then, at the planning commission, this was brought up. The fire department approved this. They got one way in, no way out. I needed two places to come in and out. They got one dead end. And then they're talking about a three-story, fifty-five feet high, you need a snorkel and stuff like that if you got a fire. How are they going to turn around in here? I just, I was really disappointed in the inconsistent treatment by the fire department in this regard. I didn't call anybody ahead of time. I've never called any one of you people ahead of time in this, in this development. I've never called. Now, so, the fire department deal is my, something new that you haven't heard before. And the other thing is, when I decided to, when Mike Lawrence approached me, and back in February...
Mr. Horning, we'll just say, when the developer...
When the developer.
We're not calling anyone by name.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah. Well, okay, Matt? Okay. Okay, so when the developer approached me to buy the six lots, and he told me that I want to put a slip in like they have at Stony Point, I said, "Fine." I didn't imagine this changed development. I don't know what I was thinking of, but I really shouldn't have signed that, knowing, I didn't realize it'd be a three-story, one-hundred-and-ninety-two-unit complex next to all R1. Everything else is R1 there, so we're going to go from R1 to R4. I don't think that's consistent. So I apologize to the people here, because if I would have known that there would have been that much change, or that large of a density, I never would have signed the agreement.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Horning. Is there anyone else who would like to testify in opposition? Seeing no one else in opposition, close the, for better lack of a term, the public comment portion of it. Public Works Director Heath Von I, did you have a comment?
Mayor, depending upon your response, I do have some follow-up for Mr. Horning's comments regarding the access, if you deem appropriate.
Yes.
So with, with this subdivision, CAC's Fourth Edition is looked at holistically. We have a development agreement in place with Mr. Horning to build out those streets, which would include Seventeenth Avenue running west to Forty-second Street. All those regulations remain in place if this were to pass. So there's a two-year time window for those development improvements to be constructed by the developer. That's why the planning commission didn't speak to those components when it came to this particular rezoning. I just wanted to make that point of clarity.
Thank you very much. I'm trying to see, does anyone with better eyesight see if someone has their hand raised, like, fourth from the bottom? Okay, thank you very much. Just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing anyone who wanted to testify. All right. Now I will open it up. This is just a first reading, so that there's no motion required. So this is just open now for council comments and questions. Council? Councilman Shetty?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for being here tonight. Just as I'm working through this, the last week, couple of weeks here, working through the process, meeting with the developer even back in the day, with the, you know, the vision he had. Development like this is always an asset to the community, whatever that may look like around the community, having developers that want to develop land within the scope of what we've established for a city. Now, the other thing too, though, is this land in this particular neighborhood, the CAC's division, the original vision goes back, if I remember, during the work session, roughly twelve, thirteen-plus years ago is when it originated, roughly. And with that, there's been now, land has been purchased, homes have been built, and there were, I guess, for lack of a better term, a first-generation landowners in that neighborhood. And so sometimes in a city, I can see how fifty years remove, sixty, seventy years, things can change, you know, the world changes, amenities change, you know, now we have pickleball courts in town. We wouldn't have had that probably thirty years ago, right? I'm bringing that up again for you, Amanda. We need more pickleball courts. But, you know, things change. However, in this, but for me personally, the timing of this is good of a, it's a great vision, I could see it potentially working, maybe theoretically, but based off the zoning that we set as a city and partnering with the developer, the original land developer for CACs, we're, again, we're in the first generation, we're talking in the first decade or two of just getting started, and it's proving to move in the right direction because it's already sold fifty-plus lots. So it's, it's proving to work, and the vision is going forward. And so for me personally, it'd be hard to get past just that initial foundational premise for moving forward with rezoning, just because of currently where it's at, and in the early phases of this new development in the last ten, twelve, fifteen years. So I just wanted to share that thought, if you will, for the council.
Thank you. Councilman Danforth?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First of all, can I ask Mr. Horning a clarification question?
Yes.
Steve, your purchase agreement that you have with the developer, is that conditional on this body's approval, or are they sold, no matter what? Is your purchase agreement that you have with the developer, is it conditional on approval of, by this body for this use, or is it sold no matter what?
No. He has the right to know the purchase agreement. He has to do it by May 3rd. So you're going to have your May 2nd first vote, right? Is it going to come up, May 2nd?
Right.
So he's got to notify, he's got to notify me by May 3rd, if he does not want to proceed.
So there's a condition?
There's a position to get out.
Okay.
He had owed no money.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you very much. And Mayor, if I could, just go beyond that just a little bit.
Yes.
I want to make something, from my perspective, I think something that's really important. I spent ten, eleven, twelve years, whatever it was, on the Plan Commission Board of Adjustments. And during that time, learned a lot about development in regards to, from the city's perspective, of what is good ways to develop, but why they're good ways to develop. And my, I look at this, and I don't fault Mr. Horning or the developer in any manner, coming to us and asking for this. It comes down to the shoulders on this side of what is allowable. And our decision really needs to be is, does this development, in my mind, does this development mean our good development practices? And that's what it's about. And our zoning is intended to help, it's for this very reason, to help to protect property owners. So it's a, it's a, it's a hard decision, because there's a lot of things within it that we need to try to work through. But, but when it's all said and done, our job here is to go to the ordinance requirements and our planning documents and processes, and see if it's justified to make this decision. And there's a lot of things there. But I do have one question, and this is probably of Matt, or the mayor, or someone. If this gets approved with what's within the document, the proposed PUD, which includes the boat ramp, does that mean that the city is agreeing to accept the property in the boat ramp? I mean, if we ultimately on May 2nd say, "Yep, we agree with it," are we agreeing to that term, or is that a whole separate issue?
I'll let our city attorney answer that.
I honestly don't know the answer to that. I think that that is, I would assume that would require a separate action, first of all, for us to accept any public infrastructure, but I'd have to look specifically at the, at the language of the zoning to answer that accurately, but I would suspect that that would require a different, a separate action.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilman Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to state that I have a history of being pro-development, and, you know, it has to make sense for the entire community, that not just one section of it, not just a few people. And that's how I decide to make this, or my decisions are made, is a community as a whole. And I look at this, this development as if it came to us as a CL right now. If it was just a rezon to a CL, I would venture to guess that most of you would not be here. Most of us, we wouldn't have gotten the feedback we've gotten, because the plan would not be laid out. You would not see the buildings, you wouldn't see the marina, you would just see a rezon to a CL. And that CL district was created for a reason, and that's because there was a big public outcry that we wanted to commercialize lakes. Our lakes are our biggest assets. That's our biggest selling point for our community, to get people to this community outside of the people and the jobs that we have here. And that's what I'm looking at, is we have one last opportunity with our lakes. There's not another opportunity around Lake Pelican that has public infrastructure to it already, that can support a marina or a restaurant. And I do take every, every comment that we've gotten very seriously, because, you know, if I bought Lot 43, I wouldn't be happy either, and built. But I keep going back to, if anyone else bought this and just brought it as a CL, we'd be looking at this entirely differently. And he brought it as a PUD with the plan, because he wanted everyone to see his vision and try to sell it. And that's where I keep, this is, it's very hard, but we also need housing in this community. And that's been the biggest cry for help, really, in this community, is we don't have enough housing to support the jobs. And we won't grow as a community without housing. And this creates almost two-hundred additional units in the city. And there are, there's obviously kinks and things to work out, whether that be a trail or a public boat ramp, I don't know the details behind that either. But, you know, that's, that's my biggest point, is, is, I guess, if this was pulled today, and it was brought back as a CL, they could almost do the same thing with very little input from our city council, or very little input from the community, because they wouldn't know what was going on. And I do think that, you know, there are other R2 and R3 areas, or zoning, within the CAC's development. This wouldn't be unique to the development. So, you know, I keep going back to, yes, there was, there was a few signatures submitted to us today, and I respect every one of those signatures. I've had petitions signed, just like everyone up here has. I know that that's tedious work, and it means something to sign that. But we also had almost three-hundred signatures, just on a quick petition, that wanted commercialized lake districts. And, you know, the lots were changed, and in the, in the work session, it was, it was pointed out that the original plan for this had almost three times the lots that are currently shown. The density in the new plat here, or plan, is significantly reduced by those lots, and then this creates more. So I, you know, to me, you have to look at it as a whole, and that's where I keep coming back to, is if this came back as a CL, what would we look at it as?
Thank you. Councilman Beeler?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to just premise this with telling you that I was also on the Planning Commission for a number of years, along with Mike. I think it was in the neighborhood of twenty years, I think I spent in the planning, on the Planning Commission. I look at this project, and it immediately comes to mind that we, we would always look at a transition. We would, if we had an R1 development, we would always look at a transition in our planning process to go from an R1 to an R2 to an R3, or some sort of buffering to get to those, and then into the commercial districts. And when we look at our master plan, our comprehensive land use plan, I don't know anywhere in our comprehensive land use plan where we would show this type of an addition to a residential area. You know, the other big thing I see with this is the spirit and the intent of this development. The spirit and the intent for this, like most of you folks here today, tonight are, was to have a home in a residential area, and that, this was not a part of that plan. The spirit and the intent was to provide residential, single-family-type housing. And we would not have that. And typically, we would not, like I say, go from an R1 to an R3 in development. And I want to say that in all the years and on our planning, and I think, I think we've tried to do our best for development. You know, if somebody comes to us, and I, I really appreciate the fact that we have people out there that are willing to do this, to take the risk to do these kinds of things. But at the end of the day, it comes down to us, we have to make a decision on if it's the right thing to do. If it follows our procedures, if it follows our ordinances. There are, there are several issues with this development. One is the road itself. I mean, the infrastructure for this. You know, chances are, that'd have to be modified. If that's the case, who's going to pay for that? Well, more than likely, the city would bear the brunt of the cost in order to do that. I appreciate a lot of Collins' comments, I do. I think we always need to be open-minded, but in this case, it is, in my opinion, this is just not the right place. It's not the right place for this. And, you know, a PUD, and PUDs are great. And I always say, PUD, PUD actually, actually means, please use discretion. You know, because PUDs are typically put in place where somebody wants to modify the application for that zoning outside of standard zoning applications. And that's what this is. And in Mr. Horning's development, it made all kinds of sense, because we went to these larger lots to allow that type of residence, which is great. And we've had PUDs where people wanted to put little tiny places in. But we have to use our discretion, we have to use all the tools that we have and all the information that our city staff can provide us in making these decisions. And to me, I'm just going to say right now, this is not the right place, the right time for this type of development. Thank you.
I just want to say, I made it a rule that, I know that you've already expressed your stance on this, and if I allow clapping, then I have to allow jeering and yelling and, you know, comments, people yelling at me. It's nothing against it, I apologize, but imagine, as has been said here oftentimes, imagine yourself on the other side of an issue, where everyone is clapping against you. And I want everyone to have the same level of respect. So thank you for your passion, but I have to ask you not to do that. Thank you. Councilman Villhauer?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to clarify, make sure we all understand what Councilman Paulson was referring to as far as CL district, commercial lake district. I mean, that is a zoning, and I guess it's, I'm going to phrase this a question, direct to our city attorney, that is a zoning change, that if that were to be... That, that is a zoning change that if that were to be propo, because, proposed, that would need to come before, wo, would that need to come before the council? I'm sorry, before the planning commission and then a, a, again to the council for, you know, first and second reading and ultimate vote. Is, is that the process that we would use if we were to adopt a CL, a lake district zoning designation?
Matt, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yes, uh, a rezone, uh, just like, it'd be the exact same action we're considering here. It'd be a rezone of a currently zoned property. Uh, the difference being is that a zone, take the R1 zone, for example, you don't have to specify, you know, the design of your homes in that zone, you just zone it that way, and then you can proceed to use the land under the permitted uses of that zone.
Okay. Tha, tha, thank you.
Follow.
Um, follow-up. Um, thank you, Matt. So, so what Councilman Paulson said as far as this being, um, happening without any kind of public uh, awareness or input is not really a fair statement then, is that? Uh, I guess I'll ask that question of you again, Matt.
So again, the, the, the rezoning process would, would be identical, uh, but the level of detail uh, would not necessarily be there.
I, I understand that. And, and I, I agree with a CL lake, I mean, there, there are any number of permitted and conditional uses that, uh, that could be, you know, uh, could result then if that were to be rezoned as commercial lake. Uh, so I just want to clarify that. Uh, and I'm not disagreeing with you, Colin, I just want to make sure the public understands what the process would be if we were to look at changing the zoning. Now, I guess just a, you know, just an editorial from my perspective. Uh, those of you that know me on the council and know my, my history, uh, I'm about as pro-business and pro-development as they come. So, some of the very changes that we've made in recent years, I was part of committees that worked on trying to simplify and streamline things for developers, uh, in the community. And I think we've, I think we've, we've reached some suc, some level of success on that, uh, that, that I think we can take some, uh, some pride in, that we have facilitated things to some extent uh, for our developers. However, I have to keep in mind that my ultimate responsibility is for what is, and I'm probably repeating part of what Councilman Beeler just said. My ultimate responsibility is to look out for what is best for the community or the citizens of this community. And, and this is one where as much as I admire what the developer wants to do and what he has done in the past, I applaud him tremendously for that. But this is a case where looking out what I feel is in the best interest of the community, I may have got very hard time supporting this.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions?
Mayor.
City Attorney Roby.
Thank you. I thought I'd just provide, um, a better answer, maybe a more specific answer to Councilman Danforth's question earlier. So, to answer the question directly, no, the boat ramp is not being dedicated with this action. Uh, that would be a, an additional action that would have to occur in the future. But it is part of the proposal, and, and so if, for whatever reason, the council were to approve this and then, and then decided at a later date they don't want the boat ramp, it would likely have to come back through the, the PUD process.
Thank you. Councilman Danforth, are you satisfied with that? Any further comments or questions?
Chair would like to say something. I, first off, would like to say, one of my major concerns with the development, I, I like a lot of the aspects of the development, but one thing that does concern me is something that is out of our control as a city, which is I, even before becoming mayor, when I was on city council, there was a lot of people who expressed concern, who lived out by Pelican, who would drive west on 212. They would exit the city limits. And now that there is a lot more development out there, there are a lot more people turning, let's say if you're heading out of town, heading west, there's a lot more development and a lot of people turning left. And I know one time I came within a hair breadth of hitting the car in front of me that slammed on its brakes because they wanted to go to a store that was out there. And I know that other people have had that happen as well. I have contacted South, the South Dakota Department of Transportation. They do say that they, that it is on their study to look at, but to increase the traffic out there, which this will do, but also the single-family housing will do as well. So, this is an issue that is not just about the development, this is about all of that. And I want to say that that's something that's on my radar because you are talking, I think, if nothing is done, there is going to be a very serious accident, if not multiple, out there. It is a concern of mine. Uh, with that said, I do want to also say thanks to everyone who showed up here tonight. It has been my pleasure to work with a lot of the homeowners out at CAC previously, uh, back last fall. And I appreciate how passionate you are about it, but also how respectful. And I hope you respect also the position that I am in as chair trying to run the meeting and forcing, you know, that's why I interrupted council during the work session and also interrupted people here. It's just out of respect for both sides because eventually you're going to be on the other side of an issue where everyone is against you, and I want to make sure that you feel respected as well. And that goes with all of our votes up here too. So I want to thank you for that. With that said, probably see a lot of you back here on May 2nd. So, I will close this first reading, and you may stay if you want to, but I'm guessing most of you would like to head home. So we'll just, we'll be at ease for just about 30 seconds if anyone wants to head out. Okay. Okay, council. Back to the top of the regular agenda, first is item A, item A, application for a new retail wine and cider license to River Card Casino. We will go to our finance officer, Kristen Bobzine, for more information.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. As stated, application for a new retail on-off wine cider, um, for River Card Casino. Notices were published, fees have been paid, everything's in order. So if there's any questions, I can try to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will open up a public hearing. Is anyone here to testify on this item? Anyone here to testify on item A? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public hearing, open it up for council action, a motion to approve the application made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Tupper. Open it up for comments and questions, council? Councilman Danforth?
Really, the only question I have at this point, I don't know where 78th Street Southwest is. Where is that?
Councilman Beeler said right by 77th.
Block away.
Can I, can I address it?
Um, actually, if I, Finance Officer Bobzine, it might be your, but if Councilman Danforth, if you allow Councilman Villahower to answer it?
If he says by 79th, I'm going to be upset.
No.
That'd be great. I'd like to understand where it is. Seriously, I drive around the lake at least once a week, and I had to check myself. 78th Street is actually Old Highway 139. And I'm assuming, and maybe I shouldn't make that assumption, that it's in the, one of the buildings out there where Scott Munger has built. So I guess that's my question then is, I'm assuming the zoning is appropriate for that area for a, for a casino? Because that's where 78th Street is.
I'm assuming as well because they already do have the malt beverage. This is just the wine and cider. So they've already been operating, um, for a long time, so.
I, I see our city attorney shaking his head.
Are you, you think 78th is, is out there by Sandy Shore? Yeah, there's not a bar in there.
No, I mean, 78th is, is Old Highway 139. The, it's right out there, you know, it's very clearly marked when you get to the stop sign on Old Highway 139, 78th Street. And then 78th Street just all of a sudden disappears as you start to go head up north on, on that stretch. So I guess that's what's, why I'm asking, I was asking a question from a zoning perspective.
Oh, maybe the address is it, oh, the address is wrong.
Oh.
It is by Wise Pizza. No, it's, uh, it's the old, um, Londromat and Casino.
Let's look at the attachment.
78th.
Okay.
Okay. Well, there is a 78th Street. I found that out yesterday.
I was going to say they're already operating, so.
I think that there was some energy that needed to be vented out from the, from the council, so. Okay, I'm glad you got the address right because I, we needed that for actual, actual approval, so.
So it's 78th Street Southwest?
I, uh, any, any further comments or questions? I am, actually, I am going to ask the council right now. I would like a motion because unless I'm told otherwise, the official motion is s, at 78th Street Southwest. We need to change that to 78th Street. That's what I was saying, is we need to, we need to either amend the motion or amend it, so. Uh, we have an amended motion to basically keep the same verbiage, but change the last part to 78th Street Southwest. Okay. I need a second on the amended motion? Seconded made by Councilman Beeler, so thank you, Councilman. Okay, on the new motion, any comments or questions? All right. Thank you very much. All those in favor of approving the application, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item B is an application for a special event retail license to Shamrocks and Adelvice at, or doing business as Dempsey's to be held at the Cottington County Expo Building on April 29th. Finance Officer Bobzine, do you have more information for us?
Thank you, Mayor. This one has the correct location. So we're clear. Um, this is a special event one, this will be held, um, at the expo. It is for the Boys and Girls Club Camel Races. All notices were published, fees have been paid, everything's in order. So if there's any questions other than the location, I can help. Thanks.
I think we, it helps to have the Cottington County Expo written out. Open it up for a public hearing, I see a few people who are here who would like to speak on this item. So, just, I, uh, please introduce yourself and tell us what your viewpoint is.
Uh, Lisa Carrico, I'm currently on the Board of Trustees of the Boys and Girls Club. Now I graduated from the board. And obviously, a lot of you, uh, council people have been to our camel races, so it's that time of year again, it's always a fun, uh, safe, responsible event, uh, adult only. But since I, you got rid of my captive audience back here, so.
Were you going to try to sell tickets?
No, but, um, because I know that council's busy with their everyday lives and all the committees that you serve on and the stuff that you're doing. So I would just like to highlight a little bit that you may not know, but at the Boys and Girls Club this year, we recently, uh, engaged a behavioral health social worker to help with, uh, the children on site. Um, we've also been working with the Watertown Development Company on, uh, attending their workforce development committee meetings, uh, to kind of get engaged with our youth on that. And then finally, as we all know, and I'm sure you've heard many different things over the past couple of months with the economy. Um, you know, people are having to pay more for gas, people are having to pay more for groceries, people are having to pay more for insurance. The Boys and Girls Club doesn't want to be that burden. We're, we're not in the business of, uh, private cost, you know, childcare and after-school programs. So, the Boys and Girls Club and the board decided not to increase their fees this year. So they will remain the same, which is very economical. Um, and I would just like the council to know that even though they are very reasonable, we still grant, what, how many? What's the percentage of, uh, scholarships we still grant a year?
Yeah, we, Liz Christian, oops. Liz Christensen, Executive Director at the Boys and Girls Club. We, um, do a lot of scholarships for, for community, uh, parents, and usually it's about 100 per year, um, that they have to apply for and explain their hardship, and, and then we, um, grant them a free membership.
So, just wanted you guys to get a little update as we also say, yes, come to the camel races. Last year, my camel was Mr. T. This year though, uh, actually, uh, it's, it's a surprise, so you have to come. So, anyway, and we hope you approve our license.
Would it be appropriate for me to say, I pity the fool who doesn't bet on your camel?
Very good.
That's going old school there. Okay, anyone else who would like to testify on this item? I will close the public hearing, accept a motion to approve the application from the council, made by Councilman Paulson, seconded by Councilman Villahower. Open it up for questions or comments.
I had a comment.
Councilman Tupper.
I've been involved with the Boys and Girls Club for many, many years. I'll guarantee it's, it's, uh, one of the greatest organizations in the community and, and, uh, but just like the girl said there, it's, it's, we keep our fees very, very low, and it takes fundraisers like this to be able to do that. And although I missed last year's camel race, I've worked all the other ones, and it is a blast. I mean, a lot of real fun, adult fun and, and, and responsible fun. And, and I encourage everybody, uh, to attend if they can, so, thank you, girls.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the application. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C is a second reading of, of ordinance number 2210, amending the zoning map of the city of Watertown from C3 Highway Commercial to PUD for Montgomery's or to be known as the Sinclair First Edition. For more information, we will go to our Public Works Director, Heath Van I.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yes, this is the second reading of this proposed planned unit development. Applicant Clark Sinclair is the acting agent for the Sinclair Land and Cattle LLC Company that has submitted a petition to rezone their property. Uh, this is, uh, property that's, uh, known for the Montgomery's Furniture Site there on the south side of Highway 212, just west of 11th Street. The current zoning designation is a C3 Highway Commercial District, and they're proposing to do a planned unit development for this area. The goal and the intent of the planned unit development is to, uh, utilize the, the large parking lot area for subsequent development for, uh, multiple businesses, retail and office space type of facilities. Uh, the planned unit development, uh, the, the plan as part of the planned unit development zoning includes, uh, language for setbacks and, uh, rights of way to be dedicated, um, and some of the internal happenings, uh, for the, for the PUD area. I'll touch on a few of those or highlight a few of those. As far as the setbacks are concerned, the perimeter setbacks adjacent to rights of way would be set at, uh, minimum of 10 feet, along with a 25-foot clear view triangle being maintained at all access points. Um, perimeter setbacks adjacent to the neighboring properties would be set at 20 feet, matching the side yard setbacks for a C3 zoning district. The utilities, um, utility and ingress and egress easements will be provided overall, uh, and, and across the internal parking areas and green spaces so that, uh, you have that connectivity for the traffic can move amongst the PUD without worrying about, um, trespassing on a private property and things of that nature. The tenants would share the monetary responsibility for maintenance and operation of those parking areas. The sanitary sewer and water mains, uh, if not already installed, would be installed underneath the proposed 11th Street Southeast Extension. That 11th Street Southeast Extension is being proposed from Highway 212 south to Jensen Avenue. That is identified in our transportation master plan as a point of connectivity and a logical street extension that was required of the developer in moving forward through the review process of this PUD. And with that, I'll pull up a diagram for reference and stand by for any questions.
Thank you very much. I'll open it up for a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing, open it up for council action to approve the amendment made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Danforth. Any questions or comments, council? Councilman Danforth?
Thank you. I'd like to refer to this. I'm trying to get a feel for what this is gonna, what this is gonna look like and act like. Because I, I believe in discussions prior to this coming to us was a city street extension from Highway two-twelve to the south to Jenkins Avenue, right? So my question is, as we look at this, is this going to, is this gonna have the feel of a street as we push the public in that direction to go to that Jenkins Avenue? Jensen Avenue, isn't it? Jensen, I'm sorry. So is this gonna have the look and the feel of a street? Or is this gonna feel more like when I drive into, to the Walmart area and there's really not a street there, but there's a area that gets me from point A to point B, and I might go get some coffee, or I might go to Walmart or the dollar store or something. What's this feel gonna be? And then the second question I have is, what is the liability from the city standpoint if we're pushing a lot of public act, or public transportation, street users through a PUD, and if something happens there, what's our liability on that? Because typically, we don't push public traffic through a PUD. So that's, those are my questions.
So to the, if I may, Mayor?
Please do.
To the question as to what this looks like, if you can visualize by the line work as I walk through here on the drawing, I believe my map's up on the screen there. I've shared it to teams. But these, these double lines represent curb and gutter. So this would look and feel a lot like any regular street that's got curb and gutter along both sides with defined access points, with those radii built out to accommodate the ingress and egress of traffic in those parking areas. So as you come south here, again, that curb and gutter continues, and you got another couple access points. And again, that curb and gutter continues into the tie-in with Jensen Avenue. So my short answer to your question, Councilman Danforth, is yes, this would look and feel like a regular street section because it's got the curb and gutter identifying the edges of the roadway. The other part that I'll address, not as an attorney, but as a right-of-way manager, as a city engineer, this will be platted right-of-way, so this segment of roadway of Eleventh will be in platted right-of-way. Now, the fact that it's going through PUD zoning district, from a planning and zoning use standpoint, I don't see any conflict with that because we have the platted right-of-way. If we didn't have the, excuse me, if we didn't have the platted right-of-way, I'd have a different opinion on that. But because it's platted right-of-way, I don't see any concerns. I defer to Matt for any other legal concerns with that.
I would, I would just agree with that. I mean, it's, I would compare it to the CACs addition, for example, as a PUD, but there's public right-of-way in it. So the fact that it's PUD-zoned doesn't change the fact that it's public right-of-way. So the liabilities are the same as they are in any public street.
If I may, Mayor, just the one follow-up then to it is, with our acceptance of that right-of-way, we're not the owners, we just have the right to use it, correct? Per se?
We would become the owners and maintainers of that street section once it's built to meet our criteria.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask, is so any road repairs, no removal, that falls on us for the road itself?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Vilhauer?
Thank you, Mayor. A question and a comment, just to follow to what Mike just asked. Okay, just to let the public as aware, the developer or the owner is responsible for building the road.
Correct.
Correct. No, it's not, it's not a city obligation that we're taking on, so I just want to clarify that. Just a comment now, I'm excited about what this is gonna look like. I think back to days when, was it Econo Foods? That building sat there empty for years and years, and kind of an embarrassment, actually. And I'm excited to see what, you know, what Montgomery's has done and what they're planning to do. And I gotta commend Mr. Sinclair for the diligence that he has extended through, what, four or five different mayors to try to get this project finally done. So I'm looking forward to what it's gonna look like when it's all said and done.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions?
Just one, I'm.
Councilman Tupper?
Just if I remember right, Heath, this had come with unanimous vote from the Plan Commission?
Correct, that's true. I had one follow-up point, follow-up point, Mayor.
Please.
There's a portion of this planned unit development, what I'd call driveway or an access area for one of the proposed buildings, that is currently, as designed, would be encroaching on a city property. Now, part of this plan is that that would be taken care of through a land swap where the city would transfer this portion of property to the developer. I just wanted to point that out. I don't know if it should be a, if the council's entertaining approval tonight, if that should be just a contingency note that that step has to happen yet. We haven't gone through that process yet. We've been in discussion with the DOT, who are also utilizing this, this land as their, a portion of their detour for the Highway two-twelve project. So we have some logistics to work through there, but I just wanted to make sure that was noted upon approval of this PUD tonight if it were to be approved.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the amendment to the zoning map. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item D is a second reading of ordinance twenty-two-dash-eleven, amending the zoning map of the city from I-two to I-one at an area to be known as Grand Guard Edition. Open it up for a public hearing, started by going to our Public Works Director Heath Van I.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go straight to a map here on this one. Fairly straightforward rezone request. Again, this is second reading. But this addition is down off the east side of Lake Pelican. And this area is currently zoned I-two, and the application is to rezone to an I-one. The intent behind the zoning is to accommodate caretaker's residence within the property. That's a use that's not allowed under the high-two heavy industrial district, but it is allowed under the I-one light industrial district. And so this too has gone through the Planning Commission, and they did have a split vote on this one, recommending approval at a vote from, by four to one. And with that, I'll stand by for questions, and Senior Planner, Brandy Hanton, is here with me tonight too for any questions.
Thank you. Open it up for a public hearing. Is anyone here who would like to speak on this? Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing, open it up for council action to approve the amendment to the zoning map. Made by Councilman Shuddy, seconded by Councilman Beeler. Open it up for comments or questions from the council. Councilman Vilhauer?
Thank you, Mayor. Heath, or, did you recall what the, what the one no vote was? I know I watched the meeting, but I can't recall what the issue was. And I guess it's not important if you don't recall, but just, just wondering if you recall.
I, I don't recall. I know, Brandy, do you recall specifically what that was for? I'll call on Brandy if I could, please.
Our Senior Planner, Brandy Hanton.
Thank you. So it was really the basis of the caretaker's residence being in an industrial area that the children's safety and whatnot was the main concern with the Board of, or the Plan Commission when they, no, sorry, the Board of Adjustment, when they approved the conditional use for a caretaker's residence.
Okay, thanks, Brandy.
Yep.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions? Councilman Paulson?
I guess a question for staff, I mean, what is, what was the intent behind a caretaker's residence? Is it for a permanent residence to live on the site, or is it for a temporary? You know, I guess I just don't understand why we would allow living in an I-one or an I-two zone, which obviously we don't allow I-two, but what's the difference?
Open it up to Heath Van I, or anyone who would like to answer that?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman Paulson. I'm looking for the definition as we speak, but generally speaking, caretaker's residence, the intent behind that, I think a common idea one might have is, if you think back to the day where junkyards and you had somebody resident full-time managing the junkyard, you know, with their bulldog and everything to defend the property. Thinking of the, I forget the movie now, The Sandlot, there you go. But that's, that's the general intent behind that. So in this particular case, there are, my understanding is there are structures or facilities on here that the owner of the property felt was better suited if they were there on a more regular basis to help tend to the property and care for and watch over the property.
Councilman Paulson?
So it is intended for permanent resident use?
Correct.
Under caretaker residence?
Correct. I would say permanent to the extent that the resident wanted to be there if they didn't have other resources.
Councilman Tupper?
Number of years ago, when that was the rendering company, there was always a house on that property that was used as a caretaker's property. So into the entrance of that, there always has been a resident. I don't know if that building still exists or not, but it has been used in that form before.
All right. Councilman Danforth?
But what is, what is occurring on the overall property in regards to the industrial use? What physically is happening there?
I will defer that again to the Senior Planner, if I may.
Okay, thank you, Heath. So currently, I believe that it is a, it's just contractor shops. So the structure that was existing, they have split that up and then have multiple contractor shops out there. So they're doing, they're storing materials inside. I actually, when I was working with the applicants during the Board of Adjustment hearing, they did express that the property's been cleaned up a lot since this picture was taken. And I think that would have been helpful because it does look like there's a lot going on out there. But that was really their reasoning for asking for the caretaker's residence, is to be able to oversee the operations and manage all the contractor shops.
Follow-up?
I don't want to speak for Mr. Paulson, but I kind of have probably what would be the same concern, is what are, what are we setting for a precedence to allow residents on an industrial site? I don't know how well-defined it is as to what criteria must be met to have a, a, what did we call this? Caretaker's house. I think what we're doing is we're allowing somebody, because they own the property, to have a house on it so they can live there, and that's what it appears like. We have contractor shops all over our community that don't require this. And I, it seems to me like, opinion is that it's just a convenience thing to, from a cost standpoint. And I think that's a poor precedence for us to set. I would have a concern with that.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a definition I could read.
Please.
If that would be of help. So the way we define caretaker's residence is a single-family dwelling unit, which will be considered an accessory use to the primary business. The individual residing at the residence must own or be employed by the business. And then it goes on to state that no home occupations will be allowed. So that's how that's defined as a caretaker residence.
A question, says any individual, does that mean one person? Or does that apply to, like, an individual, meaning this individual and the other individual living there, or?
I suppose that'd be open for interpretation.
And how would you interpret it?
I guess I would ask the applicant what the intent of the use is before trying to define what the intent of the caretaker would be. I think it's, it says single-family dwelling unit. So you could imply a single family could live there, but then further, it says the individual residing at the residence.
Councilman, would anyone like to speak before Councilman Paulson speaks a second time? Councilman Vilhauer?
I hear the concern expressed by Councilman Danforth, but as I recall, this isn't the, I mean, we have other caretaker residences in towns. It's not as though we're setting a precedent that's never been done in the community before. I'm seeing some head nodding up. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Correct.
And, and, and industrial site? Okay.
Yeah, if I can expand on that, it actually, so the Board of Adjustment is the one, is the board that acts on the conditional uses, and then that's where they ask for the caretaker's residence. It's a conditional use that's in the I-one light industrial or the C-three highway commercial district. So it's just usually the property is zoned that already, either I-one or C-three, and then they're asking the board for the conditional use. And we have, I, I would say we have probably three applications for a caretaker's residence a year.
Okay, thank you, Brandy. Councilman Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Do you know if there are children gonna be living on the premises?
I am not, am I okay to answer that?
Please.
I don't believe the, the couple that would, that own it currently would, but I think it's something that, when, when dealing with the Board of Adjustment, that we should look at it holistically of what it could be in the future, that there could potentially, like, if there were children living there.
I guess not just children, I'm just kind of, my thoughts on this is, I do, I do think that living quarters aren't, weren't intended to be on I-use, and that was the intent of I. Otherwise, why would we have an I, I-zoning if we allow residents all over, especially children? And not knowing the exact use of the property, you know, if there is, if there's chemicals, if there's welding, if there's burning, I don't, I couldn't tell you, but I, I do have a concern, especially if there's children involved.
Councilman Danforth?
May I ask Brandy this question? Brandy, can you give us some examples of where we are allowing this today? In my years, this is the only time I've ever recall this coming before the council, that's whenever I was on the council, so, actually, or even on the Plan Commission. So I, it's new to me, where have we done this?
Right, and I can pull up the map and show some of the examples. Typically, it's not, so you would, the council would typically be looking at the rezone application without knowing that a conditional use has already been conditionally granted for the property, that they were wanting to do a caretaker's residence. So that's maybe why it seems a little unusual, or just, it's not typical practice to be knowing exactly what the property is being rezoned for the purpose of. So, and then just for a little more context too, on the caretaker's residences, they used to just be a permitted use in the I-one and the I-two district. So then they never were heard by the Board of Adjustment. We made an amendment to that, I would say twenty, in twenty-eighteen, and that was more so just for the safety aspect, so that the fire department was aware of when these types of caretaker's residences were going in, in industrial areas. Otherwise, they were just permitted so they could come in and remodel their shop, and, you know, potentially, not everybody would be as publicly aware. But I can pull up the map too and show some examples, just recent history, if.
Well, there is a.
If I may, Mayor?
Please.
If, if you want to pull this up, Brandy, if you've got time. While she's doing that, I was just gonna expand a little bit on her comments where, that's a good point of clarification there, that the Planning Commission has entertained the rezone, not only the rezone, but also the Board of Adjustment has entertained the conditional use. I believe the conditional use is brought forth initially, if I remember right, Brandy, under the I-two zoning. And, and the Board acknowledged that that's not a conditional use of the I-two zoning district, that you need to rezone your property to I-one, so they directed the applicant to go through the rezone process. So they've already blessed the conditional use, if you will, as the Board of Adjustment has authority to do, but it's contingent on getting this rezoned to the appropriate zoning district from I-two to I-one.
This, this map is very slow. I'm gonna turn off a layer just so maybe I can go faster. Um I'm gonna turn off a layer just so maybe I can go faster. So I guess I can describe some of them too. Um just recently, um Veters Auto Repair, um they were granted a conditional use for a caretaker's resident caretaker's residence in a store. Nope, that's not a good example, I'm sorry. That was an apartment in the rear in a C-1 district. Um otherwise, in the Endris Industrial Edition just south of Walmart, there was a shop that was built down there, and the owner built a a living quarters in that location. Um back to up by um East Kemp, I don't remember, it was a garage formerly, but it's uh-huh. Yes, yep, back to Wise Pizza. Um that shop there, it there they sell vehicles out front. Um there's a caretaker's residence there. Um there was one south of High V in that commercial district where there's the um the shops, the contractor shops down in that area just north of the softball complex. So at least now the board of adjustment is acting on them, so we have an idea of where these are located so that the it's more it's for the life safety aspect of it, so.
Councilman Paulson, and I and I do want to reiterate that we're moving on the amendment to the zoning, not whether or not.
Correct.
A caretaker shop is proper or not, so.
Can I?
Councilman Paulson?
I mean, not I think we're beating this one a little bit too much, but can can I just ask our fire and and police what their thoughts are on something like this? Because maybe it's something we just need to look at going forward. Um right or wrong, I don't know, but I want to hear what their thoughts are on on something like this because it does come down to a safety aspect for.
Oh, and thank you. I mean, and I do think it's legitimate to have the conversation about caretaker shops because I mean, that's what prompted the rezoning, so.
I I I appreciate that question, Councilman Paulson. We had a fire south of of John Deere Implement Dealer, and I was just visiting with uh Captain uh Stall here, and we talked about, I can't remember how long ago it was, like two, three years ago, we had that fire there in the middle of the night. It was a caretaker that was there. We knew about it because we were told in the the pre-plan inspection that he was living in it. So as long as we know that that person's in there, we're okay with it.
Officer or Captain Stall?
And historically, the the plot or the area you're looking at now, back in the turkey plant days, there was actually a house and a quonset that was uh set up out there for workers that lived there. There were families that lived in the house that did have children there, and then in the quonset, it was set up in apartment-style living. There were quite a few tenants that lived onsite out there for a long time while the plant was up and going.
And we had numerous EMS and law enforcement visits out there.
Thank you. Councilman Danforth?
What we're really dealing with here and every example that I think that we've been given here is, we can call them turkey caretaker homes if we want, but really what we're we're seeing is we're seeing residents being placed within industrial properties or commercial properties. No, um so any one of those that we were given a uh an example of here or any of them, are they built 100% to all the building codes that for a home that anybody else, if they're gonna build a home, an apartment, or whatever, that that they are built to that standard? And 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 my concern is that we have residential uses, we have commercial, we have industrial uses, and here what we're doing is we're trying to justify just because you've got the owner of a property and a business that says you can go live there.
Do you want me to just respond to the fire code aspect of it? Uh Councilman Danforth, yes, they have to meet the fire-rated wall per se, and I can't speak specific to that. Obviously, Heath could as well as Brandy or as well as uh our building inspector back there, Jason. So I could tell you that when that happens, we are part of the the planning of the through the DRT aspect of it to make sure that they meet meet code.
Any follow-up, Councilman? Any further comments or questions? Hearing done, the motion is to approve the amendment to the zoning map. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Did you get that count? Thank you very much. Motion carries. Item E is a second reading of ordinance 22-07 amending the ordinances of the city of Watertown, making revisions to taxicabs and TNCs. For more information, we'll go to our city attorney, Matt Robey.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh it's my fervent hope that that the language presented tonight will meet the council's approval. So just a quick recap of the changes being proposed that haven't changed since the last couple of times we talked about this. Uh it would, one, it would remove the proposed changes would remove the proof of necessity requirement that's historically been uh in our ordinance related to taxicabs, would remove the 24-hour operation requirement, would allow transportation network company drivers to receive cash tips, it provide for the administrative approval of licenses by the finance officer, increases the insurance requirements for taxicab to more uh modern levels that require it would require an external display of a placard indicating the vehicle is a licensed taxicab, as well as an internal display of an ID card indicating the driver is a licensed taxicab driver, prohibit alcohol and drug use by drivers and passengers in taxicabs, and it clarifies and matches up with state law the offenses that might appear in a background check that would be disqualifying for a taxicab driver. So since the last meeting, the the issue at the last meeting that was discussed was the the definition of engaging in the business of of a taxicab, uh taxi the taxicab business. And so, you know, the concerns I was trying to address with this language was one, we didn't we wanted this not to apply to the sense that I the the direction I took from the council was uh for this not to apply to those uh maybe shuttle buses that are provided in conjunction with bars and hotels and that sort of thing as a courtesy and or a paid uh paid service for their patrons. And we didn't want to have the language apply to vehicles that may come into town on an occasional basis and uh pick up folks for a wedding or a limo ride or or what have you. So so what I've done here in the language is to address those two concerns is one, I I I just put uh the language in there that it doesn't apply to vehicles operated in conjunction with uh non-taxicab businesses, uh examples of, you know, bars or hotels. And then to further clarify that it wouldn't apply to those vehicles coming from out of town that are pre-arranged, I added the word uh that they hold themselves out for the immediate carrying or accepting of passengers. And so I I think uh the language I have here hopefully is is narrowed in on what we're trying to accomplish uh to be applied to traditional taxicabs. I removed that seven or less aspect. If if somebody wanted a 15-passenger van to be a taxicab, uh this language would uh would you know, catch that individual so and and require them to license their vehicle. So that's where I landed. Any questions? I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you very much. Um Chair will entertain a motion to approve the ordinance amendment made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Paulson. Any comments or questions on this? Councilman Beeler?
Just a comment, just want to say thanks, Matt. I I know you you've been working at this for a while, and we've been picking away at it, and I think we, in my opinion, we've settled on a very good ordinance, so thanks.
Chair would like to reiterate those comments. Thank you very much, Matt.
Had a quick comment?
Councilman Tupper?
Uh kind of a ditto to to what Bruce and and uh Mayor just said. Uh we vetted this out very heavily. Uh when you got three-second readings, that should kind of tell you a little bit of that, but I think it's gonna fit and and simplify what we need for taxi ordinance. Uh our biggest concern throughout the whole thing was the safety of the residents of the city of Watertown and and make sure that, you know, we're we're making making sure that they're safe and being sent out with proper people, proper licensed people and and uh and not trying to control who runs a taxicab, but just basically the safety of it, so thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Hearing done, the motion is to approve the ordinance amendment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item G, item G is a first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Watertown for a portion of Compesca Dune Second Division known as Outlot Outlot X from R-1 to R-2. For more information, we'll go to our public works director director Heath Von I.
Uh yes, uh thank you, Mayor. The uh owner, Jamie Andrews, is the acting agent of G and G Land Sales. He has petitioned for a rezone of a portion of Outlot X in Compesca Dune Second subdivision within the city of Watertown from its current designation of R-1, single-family residential to R-2, single-family attached residential. Uh there is an attached petition. This is first reading. It was recommended by the planning commission unanimously, seven to zero for approval. I will pull up uh the exhibits that are part of the petition. So in the vicinity map here, um we're on Compesca Dune subdivision at the corner of 33rd and Golf Course Road, and you see this highlighted area that is uh being petitioned to be rezoned from R-1 to R-2. There's another diagram that expresses that with the lot configuration shown for reference as well. Um this polka dotted area, if you will, and this uh overlay is what would be rezoned from R-1 to R-2. With that, I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you very much. Councilman Paulson?
I just want to reiterate, now for the same reasons, I didn't accuse myself on the other item. I'm not going to be on this one as either.
Thank you. Councilman Danforth?
Uh if I may ask Keith this question regarding the the dotted area, now that I believe they have some storage rental places on the southeast corner, that's not indicated on that, correct? But I believe it is on the previous one that you showed.
Um yes, this is uh this hashed area uh is identified as R-3, and you're correct, it has existing recently constructed storage units in this area.
All right, so are those being rezoned to are they included in this rezoning?
No, they are currently and will remain R-3 zoning.
Okay, all right.
Any further questions? All right, we'll see this back at a second reading. Item H is a first reading on an ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Watertown for a portion of Outlot A in the Prairie Hills Development from A-1 to R-1. Heath Von I, our public works director, will illuminate us upon this.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm again, my hands aren't keeping up with the discussion, so I apologize as I scroll through here. Uh so yeah, the owners of this particular property, Melissa Anderson, she has petitioned to rezone a portion of Outlot A, not the entire lot, but a portion of it that's in the Prairie Hills Development Second Edition, and uh it's currently designated as an A-1 agricultural district, and they wish for the portion to be rezoned to R-1, single-family residential. Um the intent, of course, for the rezone is to uh construct a single-family home on the property. Uh there are portions of the property that are and will remain wetland and uh will also remain within the current ag zoning district to help preserve the the wetland, um the presence of the wetlands and the integrity of them to be carried on. I do have an exhibit for this that I'll pull up as well. Here's a vicinity map of this area. Here you're out on Prairie Hills Avenue, um and then Pompeska Drive on the runs north and south here on the left side of the diagram. So this whole property is currently zoned ag, and there this is the area that's proposing to be rezoned from A-1 to R-1 uh for the construction of a single-family residence. The planning commission, I believe, voted unanimously, let me double-check the notes here, yeah, uh seven to zero, they voted unanimously to recommend approval to the city council. Couple of the notes out of the planning commission discussion are that there there exists a uh stormwater inlet in culvert that discharges out into this property. Um one of the requirements through the building permit phase would be that they preserve the conveyance of that drainage from the street through that property into that wetland. Um if there's not a current drainage easement there, for example, they'd be required to obtain one. If there's any modifications to that storm sewer that they would need to do, uh that would be part of the requirements with the the building permit. Other than that, um I think that highlights the discussions from the planning commission.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the council? Councilman Villar?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh I had a citizen reach out to me that lives directly across the the street from that, um and I was actually out yesterday, uh checked it out. Um that that there's a culvert that runs all the way under Prairie Hills Avenue out there, correct?
Correct.
Uh and the citizen's concern was is that with the the development out there and potentially, uh you know, with with some fill in where they're gonna build, was concerned about water backing up, the the drainage not being able to handle it and the water backing up onto their property in the south side of that. Uh can can you can has that been looked at, or can you make any comments about that, Heath? Or I see our city engineer is in the audience as well, uh about those concerns? I I told the gentleman to to reach out to the engineering office and uh show up in two weeks for the second here for the second reading with a public hearing, but I guess any preliminary comments you might have along those lines?
Yeah, I would echo the discussion at the planning commission level where we addressed uh that concern. Um i- if this current alignment and grade, it does not accommodate the construction of this single-family house. What we would do at at the owner's expense, they would have to make those modifications, but preserve that drainage way so that the historic drainage patterns could be preserved. So through the building permit process, uh the building official would work with engineering um in reviewing how this lot's being proposed to be regraded. You know, this pipe, my understanding is it extends quite a ways out beyond the roadway um and then discharges. It there's a you know, that may there's a chance that could be shortened and the conveyance could be shifted a little bit. Uh there's there's different ways we can accomplish that, but we just make sure to do so at the time of building permit phase and and the plating for that matter.
I- i- is it a fair request of the uh concerned citizen to reach out to our engineering department to discuss that with with them?
Yeah, we could definitely share that information with them as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much. Close that first reading. Item I is a first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning of the of Watertown at Outlot A in Block 2 of Willow Creek Village Fourth Edition from R-3 to R-1 and R-2. For more information, Heath Von I, our public works director.
I forgot to implement a quota for Brandy on rezones while I had a long weekend, so I hope to remember that next time. Um so this this particular rezone is uh an application by the owner, Don Endries, is the president of Willow Creek Development. Um as cited in the title, a portion of Outlot A in Block 2 Willow Creek Village Fourth Edition is being proposed to be uh rezoned, is currently R-3 multifamily residential, and the proposed zoning is R-1, single-family residential, um and R-2, single-family attached residential. Again, I this is the first reading, and I do have an exhibit that I'll pull up and talk through in more detail. So here is an outline and a vicinity map. This property's on the south side of Willow Creek Drive, just east of 19th Street, and uh it's currently zoned R-3, this whole parcel, and this is a representation of what's being proposed. Again, mixed zoning of R-1 and R-2 to accommodate um their their development plans for that area. With that, I'll stand by for any questions. I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions from the council? Councilman Beeler?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to say, I think, uh, this sets up nicely for transition, I think, to the commercial development. The way this lays out, the property to the east and then along, the property along Willow Creek Drive.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? We will close item I and move on to item J, an approval of resolution 22 dash 20 for repeal or carryo- or carryover of capital outlay appropriations from the 2021 fiscal year. Our finance officer, Kristin Bobzine, will tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the time of year where I reach out to all the different departments that have capital budgets from 20, previous year, 2021, um, and ask if they need those to be carried over into the 2022 calendar year. So attached is resolution 2220, which outlines those carryovers that are needed per the department's requests. If there's any specific questions, I can try to answer them. Otherwise, what this does is it pulls that budget from 2021, carries it into 2022 to allow either the equipment to be purchased or the projects to be completed. This is allowed by a home rule charter, um, and if it's not done within the three years from the original budget, it does fall off the chart and need to be budgeted again. So, thank you.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the resolution made by Councilman Vilhauer, seconded by Councilman Beeler. Open it up for comments or questions. Councilman Vilhauer.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Kristin, i- i- if, i- if there is something that the department knows that they're not going to need, uh, ever, do, do we, do we take it off automatic or do we, do we wait for the three years to drop off?
So at the bottom of this resolution, as it reads, if it is not requested, it does not happen. So if it's not on this list and it's not used, it goes back and then that kind of sits into that unrestricted fund balance.
Okay, so, so there, there may be some items that we don't even know about that?
And there are, yep, there are. So if the project, even if the project came in, say, under budget, that excess just goes back to the unrestricted fund balance.
Thank you.
Councilman Tupper?
Yeah, one question. It's just, I mean, it just, and maybe that sort of is, is, uh, under budget, but under sewer funds, the $100,000 administration building. Can you give me an explanation on that?
That is just the funds that are necessary to complete the project. There's a few last-minute, um, kind of bills that we know haven't come through as that project is almost complete, but that allows them to finish up what's necessary for the year.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any further comments or questions? Motion is to approve the resolution. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item K is an approval of resolution 22 dash 21, adopting the boundaries and approving the project plan for tax increment district number 19. For more information, we will start with either City Attorney Matt Robey or Public Works, we'll start with City Attorney Matt Robey.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, TIFF District 19 is, uh, the vicinity that, to keep in mind is the Willow Creek Drive area. Uh, it is a proposed district of upscale housing and retail and professional offices, uh, that would be, that'll be created with your approval to offset $2.5 million of, of costs of road and, and required infrastructure to spur development in the area. Uh, it's expected to result in approximately $30 million of investment over a four-year timeframe, and, um, it is expected to produce 8.3 million dollars of increment value, increment revenue over the life of, of the TIFF. Uh, as a reminder, this is the, uh, the, the unique, the unique aspect, one of the unique aspects, I should say, of this TIFF is that it overlays TIFF District Number 5. And what, um, what's been discussed and, and what was presented to the planning commission as well, uh, is the portion where the TIFF districts overlap, uh, for the next eight years, the expiration of TIFF District Number 5 will come in 2030. Uh, for the next eight years, the development that occurs, uh, in that, in that overlapping portion, uh, will, will result in revenue, of course, and the city and the developer for the next eight years will split that revenue 50%, 50/50. Uh, after the expiration of our TIFF, then the developer, Amanda's laughing at me. I'm just confusing people. Uh, and after the expiration of that TIFF, uh, then the developer will, will receive the, 100% of the increment revenue for the, remainder of the life of the TIFF. Questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you. Chair will, oh, actually, Public Works Director Von I, do you want to add something before we open it up for council deliberation?
No, thank you, Mayor. Matt summed it up well.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the resolution made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Shuddy. Open it up for couns- council comments or questions. Councilman Paulson? Councilman Shuddy?
Alright, so I have a, a question on, uh, probably for, for City Attorney Robey. Um, this is for, well, potentially for Mr. Von I, I suppose, for the infrastructure of the roads, uh, to be built in the, in the newer areas, the rezoned areas here, uh, for the TIFF. There, there's the northern section that's, um, north of Willow Creek Drive, um, doesn't appear there's any, doesn't need any infrastructure for that northern zone there. So I was just curious on the, you know, the but-for clause that TIFFs have to, you know, that requires to be part of the, the boxes we checked to make sure, um, that a TIFF hits everything needed. Does that northern zone, um, not needing any infrastructure, why that is added, uh, in this?
City Attorney?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I can't tell, is Tracy on the call or see Michelle?
Tracy is here.
Oh, thank you very much.
I would maybe defer to Tracy who, who drafted, uh, the plan, worked with the developers to put together the plan as to why that northern portion is included in the proposed TIFF district.
Tracy, just please identify yourself for the-
This is Tracy, I'm with the Watertown Development Company.
Thank you.
Uh, the northern portion was only to include and capture all the revenues that we could, uh, because we are losing, uh, half of those revenues to the city to pay back on TIFF 5. Uh, and we're not quite sure which, uh, properties will be built up first to start getting those revenues. So I just wanted to be able to capture all of Willow Creek Development's properties, that we're gonna be involved in that development.
Councilman Shuddy, do you have a follow-up?
Okay, so yeah, so just to make sure I clarify correctly, we, we agreed with the developers to have a 50/50, um, share for the last, the remaining nine years. But because of that, they want to add some more land to recoup their 50%. Just want to make sure I heard that correctly.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm just gonna start by saying that the city really took a leap of faith back in, I think it was 2008 roughly, when this was originally, uh, built and the TIFF was put in place. Um, and I would say we're still taking another leap of faith redoing this. Um, there's still not a guarantee, and I hope the developers understand that, that if they hold out for another eight years, the city's really stuck. And I hope that that's not the case. And, you know, we took a, a leap of faith again redoing this and including this in there. Um, so I, I really hope that this land sells within eight years and that we actually do recover that cost, 'cause I think that that is, uh, it, we've been a lot of cost on this road. And, uh, you know, it was, it was installed to help these developers, uh, and help the city. And so hopefully, going forward, um, that's, that's unders- that's understood going forward.
This is Tracy with Watertown Development Company again.
Thank you.
Um, I just want to make it clear that there are no monies being borrowed from the city of Watertown for this project. It'll be strictly up to the developer to get those funds, and the revenues are just to assist in helping them pay that back. So the city won't be out anything if, if the, if the, if this TIFF doesn't pay on TIFF 19.
Councilman Vilhauer?
I, I guess I would just, uh, probably echo somewhat what, what, uh, Colin is saying. Uh, when I've, when we first had this proposed to us, I was not crazy about it. But as I look at it, um, I, I'm thinking that, okay, probably a leap of faith, but to me, that, that TIFF so far has not performed anywhere near like we were hoping it would. So to me, if this can spur something, I'm thinking 50% of something is better, is greater than 100% of nothing, uh, is how I look at it. So I, I can support this. But it is, it's a leap of faith.
Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, again, I'm just trying to get clarification for myself. Um, so just, you know, the, there's already been some property developed to the west of that northern, uh, there's the, with the car wash in the corner and whatever other properties there. So those have already been developed. Um, again, does this hit the, does this mark the but-for box that's in the TIFF, you know, when they have those requirements? Does this, does this legally, I guess it would just be for, for Attorney Robey, does this legally hit that box being that they're, they're already developed a portion of that property? And I just, yeah, I'll defer to you.
Please do, Matt.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Councilman Shuddy, so there's no clear legal definition of the but-for test that, you know, we're, you know, we're supposed to analyze TIFF districts under. Uh, there's a bit of an art to it and, and some, of course, some number crunching. Uh, I know other, other communities will employ outside firms to kind of come up with a rate of return that developers should expect. And, and if they can't get that rate of return because of something unique about the land, then a TIFF is appropriate, et cetera. So a- as a community, the way we've been operating, um, the, the last few years with these TIFF applications is we, we trust the development company to, to vet those, vet those issues, to, to basically make a judgment call and, and propose TIFFs to the city that but-for, the proposed TIFF, the development that's being proposed won't occur. Uh, or perhaps maybe just won't occur to the extent that they're proposing to develop. And so that's, you know, so in that, in that vein, uh, here, I believe that the, the WDC would attest that this meets the but-for test. And, and I believe there's a representative from the developer in the audience too, if, if, if you wanted to, you know, speak to them directly about that aspect.
Thank you.
Councilman Tupper?
More of a comment than it is a question. Um, first off, hats off to all the developers that have came forward and, and worked with the, uh, city of Watertown and Watertown Development Company. But you've been a lot of TIFFs in the last few years, and I'm just gonna say every one of them's a leap of faith, which they are. So, uh, we got a lot of faith in our developers that are coming to the town, a lot of faith in Watertown Development Company, and a lot of faith in the city of Watertown. So, thank you.
Councilman Danforth?
I know Councilman Vilhauer had made a comment about if we were, um, to not do this, you know, certainly 50% of something is better than 100% of nothing, right? Um, I do have concerns with re-TIFTing, uh, properties. And so, 'cause first thing I gotta ask myself is, why didn't it sell? Why didn't it develop? And there's a lot of if-why's that go along with that, but we're on the outside of that. We, we are the ones that we don't dictate land prices. It's really, and probably in most cases, that's really what this comes down to, is why are they asking for the land? And I'm okay with the 50/50 that we're doing right now, but we need to have a discussion about how we get developers that have skin in the game when we do our TIFFs. So that we don't just TIFF the property and we don't see any revenues from it for 20 years or 30 years or wherever that number is. And the reason why we're not seeing it is because of their land price that they, that they're trying to get for it. Um, so I'm just saying, I, I, I'm concerned, I like the use of the TIFFs, but I'm concerned that we don't have a good enough definition of what, how we're gonna apply them within the city. And, um, and I'm not talking about laws or anything, that's a whole separate issue, but what governs them. Talking about how we use them. And I think that needs to get looked at by us. Um, and I think we need to try to figure out how do we work with developers, get this to be a useful tool. But it's, it's gotta be, there's gotta be some skin in the game that really requires them to get something out of the property so that we do get benefit to this thing. And at the end of 10 or 20 years, whatever it is, we're not sitting here holding the bag. So I, I'm willing to support this, but as a council and as staff, I think we've got some homework to do, in my opinion. And I know we had a educational thing here a little while ago with a gentleman that, that tried to teach us some stuff about TIFFs, but, um, I, I think we've got some work to do on it. I, I've got some concerns about the practicality of it and the consistency. I'm afraid that we're, anything that comes to us anymore is gonna have a TIFF attached to it, and I'm not sure that's the right thing. So, just comments.
Thank you. Councilman Shuddy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and just my final thought, I'm agreeing with, uh, Councilman Danforth, that to continue to educate us and, and grow in the understanding of TIFFs, um, for on this particular one, just for me personally, would be to, I, not gonna, I, however we go by doing that, but to, to withhold that, that northern, that northern portion of, uh, Willow Creek Drive, um, just for me, that's just my own personal thought there in rewriting it. But that's just where I'm at, so.
Thank you. With that, the motion is to approve the resolution. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? One nay? Motion carries. Item L is an approval of the joint powers agreement with the South Dakota Department of Transportation for transportation alternatives funding associated with Lake Compeska Trail Loop Phase 3B and to authorize the city manager to sign all necessary documents. Heath Von I, our Public Works Director, will tell us more.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. If I could use some latitude and call on our assistant city engineer to help with this one. Uh, he's a lot more intimately familiar with it. And while I was looking out in the crowd here, I just quick also recognize, I got a lot of support staff here from Public Works tonight. I get the honor to sit up here and talk about a lot of things, but I guarantee all these things that we talk about in Public Works would not happen if it weren't for Brandy Hampton, their senior planner, Jason Spurgeon, our building official, Rob Bain, our street superintendent, Mike Berger, the wastewater, solid waste superintendent, and of course, Justin, the assistant city engineer. So I just thank you all for being here tonight. And, um, and Steve, you too, thank you. But Justin, uh, has been working with the parking wreck director, Terry Kelly, very closely as we do with these pathway construction projects. So I'll just hand it over to him and let you, and let him explain where we're at with this particular phase of the pathway around the lake.
Justin Peterson, our city engineer, please go.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Heath, if you wouldn't mind pulling up the, uh, the map. Um, this is a, a joint powers agreement with the South Dakota Department DOT for Phase 3B. We've had, uh, similar agreements for, uh, the Phase 1 project as well as the, the Phase 3A project. Um, and this, uh, the DOT funding for this is, uh, six, 67.6% of the cost of the project. And then, uh, the city would be responsible for 32.4%, which is roughly $192,000 based on the estimates of the engineer. Um, this is just a map of the, the bike pet, bike trail, uh, mentioned Phase 1 that was completed, uh, last year. And then, uh, Phase 4 was completed prior to that, and that was, I believe, done by city, city funding. And then this, uh, Phase 3A, we, um, the city also has a grant for that one. And, um, and now, of course, this is Phase 3B, and we plan on, uh, bidding and construction Phase 3A and 3B together, um, to hopefully get, um, economies of scale, so, for pricing-wise. Uh, and then at the bottom, I'll just mention, uh, Phase 2A and 2. Uh, Phase 2A was planned to be designed in, by the game fishing parks, and Phase 2 would be the city. And that would be the last, um, part of the bike trail to be completed. But the, uh, the, the agreement in front of the council tonight is for, uh, Phase 3B and accepting the funding.
Thank you very much. Well, Heath, I appreciate that you gave credit where it was due to the great team that you have, but come on, man, you're not running for reelection here. So, but with that said, is there anyone else from your team that you would like to have speak on this?
Uh, unless, uh, parking wreck director, Terry Kelly, would like to chime in. Again, we work closely with him on these projects and, uh, TK, I believe, is online.
Yep. Uh, thank you, Mayor. May I?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
For the record, Terry Kelly, Parking Rec Director. Just, I know Councilman Villahower did reach out as well. Just an update, just, I don't think he touched on it, but I did speak with IDG, our Consulting Engineer, and the DOT is kind of backlogged on their plan reviews, so 3A, 3B does look like a 2023 project. Just to give the public a timeframe on where we're at with, with the trail, then our, our hopes would be Phase 2 and RN in 2024, which would complete the, the link. I did talk to Ray and Kittle on 2A, and they would also shoot for 2023. So just an update on the timeframe, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. We've heard from everyone that we need to? All right. Chair will entertain a motion to approve this item, made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Danforth. Open it up for comments or questions. Councilman Tupper?
This question's for Director Kelly, doesn't really, well, does have something to do with this. Is there, I know myself and Councilman Villahower have been asked many times about some repair on some of the existing, is there any plans for that this year?
Yes, we do. We will be looking at North Lake Drive, kind of adjacent to Compeska Lodge, running out to the county road. We've got some severe damage out there in the wetland area, also Highway 20, kind of the wetland area midway between, oh, 14th Avenue and South Lake Drive at the City Park turnoff. So, yeah, they, they are. I will also work with Heath's team, Justin. In particular, I know Marcy Luna has also looked at that area, but the funds that we did put, this year we budgeted the standard 175 and additional 75,000 for maintenance to those areas, so. But it's ongoing, that's our hope also, Councilman, to get this lake loop or wrapped up, and then we really want to go back to our existing system in the near future. I know we've got quite a few areas we need to identify, but the two that we get the most common sun are definitely North Lake Drive by Compeska Lodge, and again, Highway 20. If that answers it, Councilman Tupper?
Yes, it does, and thank you. That's definitely the ones that we've been getting a lot of questions on, and thank you for your hard work on it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Councilman Villahower?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a question, I'm not sure who to address it to. Okay, these are only estimated costs at this point, both for 3A and 3B. Are those percentages, do they vary, are those percentages fixed, or is the dollar amount that the grant is for fixed?
The, the dollar amount, if I may, Mayor?
Yes, please.
The dollar amount is fixed, Councilman, so it's not a percentage based, it is a flat fee that will receive reimbursement from the grant.
Okay, so, so if actual costs or when we bid are actually more, we're on the hook for, for that extra amount? Okay.
That is, that is correct.
Thank you. Councilman Beeler?
Thank you, Mayor. Since I've got both you folks here, I was going to save this for old business, but I, I think I'll bring it up now. It's a good segue in regards to the bike path off Willow Creek Drive, where that's been tore up. What is the schedule for that to be replaced? You know what I'm talking about? Right past the bridge that goes to the north?
Right. And Mayor Maye?
Yes, please.
And, and City Engineer Peterson and I actually met on this, I would say, a couple weeks ago, and the developer is well aware of the need to, to feather that back in, and it sounds like the delay will be the hot mix plant opening. So we are asking at this point for a gravel, a gravel approach on both, both sides, both the east and west. And Engineer Peterson, you could probably, maybe if you've talked to the developer with any more information than what I have.
That's, that's correct, TK. The, just, the, last I heard, the asphalt plant would be opening up the end of May after Memorial Day, so it'll be sometime after that point.
Follow-up, Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. Also, I mean, are there plans currently to do any dirt work, any prep before the asphalt comes, so that when the asphalt's available, it's, it's there to be put in place? Are they preparing the bed for that?
They, they haven't yet, but they, they, they would prepare the, the bed before the asphalt. I, I can reach out to the developer.
Thank you. You know, I hope we, I hope we stay on top of that. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the joint powers agreement and allow the city manager to sign the documents. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item M is an award of a bid for pavement rehabilitation for large projects to Dunick Incorporated in the amount of two, roughly $277,000. For more information, we'll go to our Public Works Director, Heath Von I.
Thank you, Mayor. This is one of our pavement management project bid awards, where we designate several patch areas throughout the town that need, just some simple asphalt patching, but they're a larger scale that we can't do with internal forces, and so we, we bid this out and try to gain some economy of scale with, including several locations in one project. With that, this did come in a little over budget. The combined budget for the, the two bid schedules here is $250,000. You can see the bid awards for $277,000. If you recall, our recent Mill and Overlay project ran light. This is one of those areas where, in the whole pavement management program, we've got a little bit of give and take on each individual project, where we can shift money in the CIP between these projects as needed, not knowing where they're going to come in bid-wise. So that's what we'd recommend doing, is taking this $27,000 out of what's left of the Mill and Overlay. As a separate note, we've also discussed with the contractor of expanding that Mill and Overlay project to use up more of that budget under a change order. So you'll likely be seeing a change order coming forth for that as well. With that, I'll stand by for questions, and Justin's, of course, available too.
Chair will entertain a motion to award the bid, made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Beeler. Open it up for comments or questions. Councilman Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just gonna reiterate why I, I brought up a comment last meeting about trying to use that budget up on the Mill and Overlay, because as you see on this one, the per ton cost is $160 per ton. And obviously, this is a lot less quantity, but you know, in, in the future, I would hope that Watertown gets more competitive pricing instead of just one bidder. That definitely plays into the cost of this, but this is what we see when, when we do less quantity. When you usually get more quantity, you get a better pricing. But, you know, that's why I would, I would continue to push that we do more Mill and Overlay this year with, with the current price that we got on that. Because this is, it, it gets to be really expensive for the little bit of work that we actually do. And, but I do want to reiterate too, like what Amanda said last time, I understand completely that we're still putting it into roads, but it depends on how much we get out of that. And, you know, on a big reconstruct project, we're definitely not getting, we're not showing the public miles of road, we're showing a small section of road, whereas a Mill and Overlay, usually we can show a little bit more to the extent that we're doing. So large patches are definitely needed, but I would continue to push on more Mill and Overlay in general.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councilman Villahower?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to probably repeat what, what you said, Heath. So if the public's watching this, I mean, there are areas, I mean, smaller areas where our own internal staff will be taking care of repair, you know, repairing or patching, and we're not just relying upon Dunick for repairs around town.
Correct, that's true.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, the motion is to award the bid. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We are going back to item E from the, that used to be on the consent agenda, which is an authorization for the finance officer to issue a special check to Gray Construction Company for construction activities at the new airport terminal building. Our Finance Officer, Kristen Bobzine, do you want to?
Mayor, I think this one actually came through from engineering, so I don't know if they have any comments on it in regards to the special check.
Public Works Director Heath Von I?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So as you recall, perhaps you do, but last, I think it was the last meeting, we had something similar on the agenda. This is simple, simply an issue of processing and it not making our, our timely cutoffs. So in lieu of holding out almost three quarters of a million dollar payment to our contractor as a progress payment on the airport, till the next round of checks go out in May, we wanted to process a special check. What happened was, is between the contractor and our consultant, getting the proper paperwork into our staff, it just didn't happen, and it didn't make the cutoff. So now we're having to issue a special check that the finance office needs authorization for before they can submit that for payment to the contractor. We have addressed this issue with both the contractor and the consultant, and we hope that it does not happen again. That's, that's my dire hope, and hope to correct the situation and, and not see this come through as a special check again.
Thank you for that, and thank you for preempting what I was assured to be a question. Chair will entertain a motion to authorize the issuance of the special check, made by Councilman Villahower, seconded by Councilman Tupper. Any comments or questions, Council? Seeing none, the motion is to authorize the special check. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item H is an approval of the, of the professional services agreement for surveying systems associated with the new street facility. For more information, I believe we will go to our Public Works Director Heath Von I.
Thank you, Mayor. This, this is an item that pertains to the design of the new street facility. JLG Architects, who we recently entered into a contract for, for the design of that facility, has a subconsultant that they work for with the civil site improvement end of things. That subconsultant is Stockwell Engineers. One of their first tasks, of course, is to get a, a site survey of, of the topography of the property that we bought. This, this survey would cover the entire 27 acres, so that we have some good information for the entire property, not just a portion of it that the street facility would be located on, but we wanted to get a survey over everything. So that's what this contract is for, and falls within reasonable costs as far as the engineering staff and the, the street superintendent were concerned.
Thank you. Chair wanted to specify something. The motion that I will be requesting is to approve the agreement and authorize the city manager to sign all necessary documents, so two-part, but I will entertain that motion now, made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Beeler. Any comments or questions? Councilman Danforth?
Yeah, but as the person that requested this to be removed from the consent and put onto here, the questions I had were mostly answered by, by Heath now, as far as what the scope of this was, what its purpose was. I, I didn't know if this was site-specific, meaning, okay, we're going to put it here, and now let's go through, survey this, because we, you know, we, at this point still, are assuming we're going to build. We don't exactly know what we're going to prove as to what gets built. So you clarified that on the, on your explanation, Heath, so I'm okay with where we're at here. So this is part of the site selection on the whole property. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the agreement and authorize the signing of documents. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item J is an approval of the purchase agreement pursuant to Sourcewell bid pricing for a John Deere 350L waste handler dozer. For more information, we'll go to our Public Works Director Heath Von I.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a straightforward purchase off of our CIP, the capital improvement plan for equipment related to landfill operations. I would note, you know, the reason we had this on consent was just because of the simplicity from staff's side of it, that it was within budget and being procured from the approved Sourcewell bid process. So I apologize that, you know, there was nothing covert intended there, but just wanted to make sure that that was, that was shared, that it is within budget. And Superintendent Berger is here as well. If you've got any questions here, I'd be glad to help answer them.
Actually, but we're getting more information now, right?
Or standby, or we can stand by for questions, unless you wanted to expand on anything there, Mike?
Officer for questions? I would just say, yeah, it's within budget, and we only have one dozer, and it's an essential piece of equipment, and we've been out without one for a couple of weeks now, because the differential has failed on the existing dozer. Parts are not available to rebuild that differential. They're not even have, they don't even have a build date on the parts, and that dozer has been discontinued. So that's what prompted us to switch from the scraper to the dozer purchase and stay within our budget this year. And we, we need it, we can have a rental unit here in a couple days to keep us, get us back in business, have the equipment that we need.
All right, thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the purchase agreement, made by Councilman Villahower, seconded by Councilman Shuddy. Open it up for Council deliberations. Councilman Beeler?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know, Mike, if this just goes to you, I, we oftentimes we purchase items with Sourcewell. Do, do we challenge that from time to time? I mean, do we look to see actually outside of Sourcewell if there are better opportunities?
Well, actually, well, actually, when we go to Sourcewell, we usually request more than one agreement to, to consider, and we did in this case as well. But we have kind of went more towards Sourcewell than the, the sealed bid process, because it's, it's efficient, and you know, you, you can, you can pick the equipment that you, you have support for, you know, just mechanical support in your area, so.
And they, they typically get a better price, because they're selling throughout the state, I would assume, correct?
Yeah.
Is that what I, the call?
I think this, this particular unit had a 28% reduction off of the retail price.
Thank you. Councilman Villahower?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to follow, because I was one of the pull, suggested pulling these two, this one and the airport terminal project or payment off the consent agenda. I, I was not opposed to either one of these, but we are looking at spending over a million dollars of taxpayer money that I thought it, it's worth a couple minutes, this discussion, just to make sure that we're open and transparent about what we're doing. And I have no objections to either one of these, but that's why I did what I did early on in the meeting.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Motion is to approve the agreement. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We now have in new business, well, actually, technically, I've got to open it up for old business first. Is there any old business? Seeing no old business. We do have one thing under new business, and that is an approval of a pyrotechnics or open flame permit for fire, for a fireworks display at Anza Saka Complex on April 30th of 2022. And this is a special, it just didn't get on the agenda prior. We've done this before multiple times, and to discuss this, I think that we will have our Watertown Fire Department Chief, Don Rowland.
Thank you, Mayor. This came in late, like Mayor Holene said, last Thursday or Friday night it got here, and I wasn't able to get it on a consent agenda, but this show is going to happen on April 30th. This is a vendor demonstration show for Lou's Fireworks. They did it last year as well. Great thing about it is, it's open to the public, everybody, so it should be kind of fun. They will be a little bit delayed intermittently as the show starts, but I believe in the last 15 minutes of the show, it'll actually take off pretty good, and it'll be actually kind of fun to watch. So my guess is to get out and enjoy it. It'll be kind of neat.
Thank you very much. The chair will need a motion, I will just say, the motion will be the approval of a pyrotechnics or open flame permit application for fireworks display at Anza Saka Complex in Watertown, South Dakota on April 30th, 2022, for Lou's fireworks?
So.
Okay. Moved by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Paulson. Any comments or questions, Council? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the permit. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. And I would agree with Chief Rowland. Get out and enjoy it. It's a free show.
I believe that, Chair, that Lou's is going to be doing some advertisement over the next few days too, so, thank you.
It's a great free, it's a great free show. Are there any liaison member reports? Are there any announcements? We have no reason to go into, into executive session, so the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, I thought I did old business before new. Sorry. Do you, any old business?
Yeah, me. Yeah, I know you were thinking, you were thinking. And that's probably why I didn't hear it, but, no, I, I- why I didn't hear it, but, uh, no, I, I, the, the question I have is, is in regards to the sand pile on Willow Creek Drive. I don't know where that sits. Um, it looks terrible with all that plastic hanging off of that thing, and I don't know what our intentions are, but I would like to see, or I'd like to know what we plan, if anything, to do about that. I know that was supposed to be removed, and a lot of it was, but I'd like to know where we're going with that.
Um, I, I will allow you to comment on that, but I would ask staff if they would like to comment before.
Uh, yeah, I'll just give an update on where that's at. Um, we did allow for that pile to be relocated, and we executed and approved a haul road agreement for the relocation of that material. Um, what we can do, Councilman Beeler, is follow up with the contractor, who somebody at the table knows very well. It might know better exactly what the current plan is, but, uh, we could definitely follow up with staff as well.
Thank you. Councilman Paulson?
Thank you. Uh, speaking on behalf of the contractor, um, it, we are not the owner of that pile. We did, um, have an agreement to move some of it. We were trying to get it all moved. There were some disagreements for different reasons, so it didn't all get moved this year. I agree, it looks like not, not good out there, but, uh, you know, we're not the only contractor in town too. So it, um, I don't know what the owner's intent is. I know that they wanted to get rid of it as well, but, um, you know, a lot of it, they want to use on site too. And when there's no building taking place or just small areas, it just takes a little bit longer.
Follow-up from Councilman Beeler.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I think, just my opinion, I think it would be, it'd be, it would be nice if we could remove that plastic and what's holding it down. I mean, that looks terrible. And, and if you look out there right off the road, there's a tipped over development wooden sign laying there. It looks really bad on, on Willow Creek Drive. So if we could just clean that up for now, uh, I'm not challenging the, the removal of the pile, cause it doesn't do us any good if the whole pile isn't covered up according to ordinance. Uh, so that, that's what I'd like to see if that's feasible.
Councilman Tupper?
And then at one time that, I'll agree with, with Councilman Beeler. At one time that, that pile was covered with plastic, and the plastic was covered with tires. Now half, or all those tires have been removed, or a good share of them, and put into a stack, and they're just laying there. So, I mean, that should be, also be addressed, so.
Thank you very much. Noted. We will work on it. Councilman Danforth.
Just a reminder on that pile. Uh, that pile is to be used by the landowner of which it came from, and not to be moved and sold and utilized in any different manner. Um, that's what the agreement was. And as far, uh, Bruce, I believe, one of our requirements was there had to be some kind of coverage on there. And that's why the plastic came and the tires came, and that's kind of went by the wayside. So, you know, our, our agreement with them hasn't changed. And Colin, you guys, that's a contract between you and them as to the movement of it. That's their issue, not yours. And, uh, so we just need to hold their feet to that fire. That took a long time for us to get that issue addressed, and we just need to keep our, our thumb on that one and, and hold those individuals accountable for what they've already agreed to. So, um, I agree with them. I've, I've actually had a couple of people talk to me probably within about two, three weeks ago about that. So people are seeing it.
Thank you. Councilman Tupper?
But one thing I am going to point out is that's not the only pile in town that we need to worry about, cause there is some more around town that have been there for a long time. So if we're going to clean house, we need to sweep up the street every place, so just keep that in mind, so.
Any other old business? Now the chair will, City Attorney Roby, please don't, please tell me that there's not another taxicab ordinance coming.
No, no, I was just gonna, well, I want to clarify one thing that, that, uh, Mr. Danforth had mentioned that, you know, as far as them not using the, the, the pile anywhere other than their own property. So that, it, it may have happened when you were, during your sabbatical from the council perhaps, but, uh, there was a haul road agreement in effect now that, that allows the dirt to be moved by J and J. Uh, so, uh, on a prescribed, on a prescribed route.
Right. But may I ask, Mayor, does that mean that they can sell that aggregate material? Or is it just purely getting it off? We're talking about the use. That material was mined inappropriately without licensing, and that's why the pile is different than a certain dirt pile around. It was mined inappropriately, and, and the, the law state without that mining permit, they can't sell it. They can only use it. And so the movement of it, if I remember right, was to facilitate the look of what we have out there, get it away somewhere. It had, did not change the conditions under which that material could be used. Am I wrong in that?
I, I don't, uh, the contract doesn't contemplate the use of it. I, I, I believe, uh, and Heath can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, that we, we got to the point that that had happened, and the larger city concern was cleaning up that area. And so we had entered into the agreement for them to do with it as they will, just to get it off there. That's my understanding, that we, we didn't, it wasn't, yeah.
Thank you very much. Any further comments on this? Any other old business? Now the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Made by Councilman Paulson, seconded by Councilman Tupper. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Good night, and God bless you, Watertown.